Leaving call to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yeah, here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special event applications.
The first application before you is for Jersey Pride. Second is for the Zombie Walk. Third is for the Lead Walk. The next one is the Shoreline Heart Walk, followed by the VNA Community Vaccine Pop-Up on various dates. A Walk in Their Shoes to be held on November 13th. Spring Lake Shore Club like to host a wedding on our beach on September 24th. And the next request is from Allen Chapel to do an Ocean Baptism on September 4th. And lastly, a Back to School Event, held sponsored by Second Baptist Church in Springwood Park on August 28th. Are there any questions on any of the applications? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to items to be presented. We will have a presentation from the Preferred Behavioral Health Group.
Hello? Better?
There you go.
Good evening. I'm here representing Preferred Behavioral Health with two of my staff, Nicole Dougherty and Simon Dick. We are here to present a, I guess, a proposal to provide services to the Asbury Park Police Department to address those who have been arrested for possession, substance use, related behaviors, and to provide support services to the Asbury Park Police Department to come to them upon receiving a call and coming and speaking with the folks that have been arrested, and hopefully provide education, support, and encouragement and motivation to enter treatment. The team is from my STAR team. They had, what's, that's what it's saying, sorry.
So STAR stands for Support Team for Addiction Recovery. We are a voluntary program that provides case management and peer recovery support services to anybody in Monmouth County with an opioid use disorder. The program varies person to person, and I guess what our desire is, is to be of service to the Asbury Park Police Department and come out. We would be on call, you know, to come meet with the person that was being detained and offer them treatment, support, try to meet them where they're at to get them motivated to change. We've been working with Mr. Schultz for about four years now from Asbury Park Special Services, and we really enjoy a couple of the team members. We live in Asbury Park, and we have a strong desire to make a positive impact in our community.
Right.
Including in that is that Preferred itself, Preferred Behavioral Health Group itself, has been in existence since 1976. We moved, we opened an office in Monmouth four years ago to provide services, Nicole said, to the Monmouth County residences. We have initiated a similar program in Ocean County that we have been doing for five years under an Ocean County Grant Service, in which clients would go, potential clients would go to the police station in Brick and Point Pleasant and present themselves for help. And the police department in this, that particular program, which is a little different than this one, but it follows kind of the same support we'd like to give the community of Asbury Park and the police department assistance, is that they come to us, we would sit with them, make phone calls, we would do all of the work with them, we would transport them. If there was a bed, we would, if there wasn't a bed, we'd call them first thing the next morning, okay, let's start this process again. And Brick and Point Pleasant have been very receptive to the program now. Of course, COVID kind of changed some things over the last year and a half because it wasn't in-office program. They, you know, the clients and families would come to us. When we were all isolated in COVID, it was more phone service. But in this case, the model changes a bit, but the goal is the same. Preferred Behavioral Health has always had a mission of helping families in their communities. And with the collaboration with Doug Schultz and what the STAR team has been doing with them, with his folks, we feel like we can be helpful to the Asbury Park Police. The hours would be 8:00 to 8:00 during the week. After 8:00, staff would still be available for phone calls to make appointments for first thing the next morning to meet the detained folks. And weekends would also be like an on-call kind of situation, but we would be available. I live in Monmouth County myself, I don't live in Asbury, but I know that my son's 16 and, knock on wood, so far so good. But I believe that this service should be provided to everyone, and hopefully we can start with the Asbury Police Department and work with others, because this is killing our families and our communities. And COVID, just a little note, COVID has increased the opioid overdose, the alcohol use disorder, and I know that Nicole mentioned that it's an opioid use disorder granted, funded program by the state of New Jersey, and that is how we can provide this service. So we already, as long as they meet the criteria for the program, which it's really hard not to, because it doesn't have to even be, it can be that that person has a brother who uses opioids and they are eligible for the grant service program. So it really is, you know, really everyone. But also, you know, opioids is the main diagnosis, but if they're using other substances, we will come as well. So I know opioids is always the main focus of conversation when we talk about overdose and substance use disorders today, but so we would come as long as, you know, we were needed. And education material will be provided to families as well. I was outside speaking before the meeting began about kids 15, 16, 17 that have the right to choose treatment or not, because they don't need their families for that decision, although certainly you want the families involved. You know, we would provide education materials, we would provide contact numbers if they may decide two days later that they don't really want to follow the legal route and they want to get help, we will be available then. So that's basically what we're proposing. If you have any questions. Do you answer them?
Where are you located at?
So our Monmouth County office is 1405 Route 35 in Ocean Township. We're in the Spencer Building.
And so I saw that you're available by phone after hours, and on weekends, what if you were really needed? What if you really needed to have one of you here? Would you be available?
So that's the great thing. Like I said, three of the team members live right here in Asbury Park, so we are ready to deploy. You know, one of us would find the availability to get here if it was an emergent need that you needed us.
And you're only engaged once somebody's been detained? You don't do any proactive work? You're someone, the way this is going to work is someone's detained by the police and then you're brought in?
So for this specific, what we're talking about today, yes, but I can tell you, you know, the grant launched four years ago in January here in Monmouth County, and we do proactive work all the time. A lot of times we're out at the train station handing brochures, bringing what we call blessing bags, and just trying to engage with anyone that wants to hear us. We work closely with the local treatment centers, residential outpatient, New Jersey reentry, Asbury Park Social Services, so drug court, probation, parole.
And I will say the staff, I'll give you an example, they're at every event, providing and supporting and education to whomever wants to come and just talk. So they're doing, I think, three events in the next three days, right?
Yes.
And so we are available in, you know, in general, but this particular program is collaboration with the Asbury Park Police and Doug Schultz.
Thank you. Thanks for you for all your work. Do you have any brochures or anything that we could?
I do have some in the car.
All right. Would you mind dropping some off?
Sure.
You don't have to do it right now, but before you leave, that would, I would like that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm gonna mimic what Eileen is saying as well. Thank you. So I work for the Law Project, so I deal with Preferred all the time, and such a great experience with you guys. And, you know, lots of training in mental health, often self-medicating with opiates or drugs or alcohol, but so glad that, you know, we'll have people who are trained in dealing with, you know, what happens, you know, when people are in crisis, so I couldn't be happier about that. And to Eileen's point, you know, after these three months, we would really love to hear what worked, what didn't work, how do we do this better, starting in 2022? How do we be more proactive? You know, how do we work better with, you know, all of you and what you're seeing in the community? So very, very excited, and, you know, I'm not sure a lot of people know that the opioid crisis is at the highest it's ever been, ever.
Yes.
Right now, during the pandemic.
And going just to your point, Ms. Quinn, in the discussions with Doug Schultz and his discussion with the police department, we chose a three-month interval to do exactly what you just said, is to see what we're doing, what's working, what's not working. How many folks have we served? How can we serve more? Because the idea is to serve as many as we can.
Great.
Because we need to have people stop dying.
No, no. Very excited to kind of launch this and take it from there.
Yeah, the only thing is, instead of waiting for the three months to be over, getting a report, can we get like a monthly report?
Sure, of course. Sure, I can come visit.
Just to keep us abreast and then.
We can come visit.
Suggestions from you.
And give you that.
Right, and suggestions from you, what else is needed for us.
I'd be glad to come in person as well.
No, okay, whatever, just, I don't want to wait three months and like.
Absolutely.
No, I agree.
You tell us something then, we could have fixed two months ago.
Absolutely. I do believe since it's new, well, it's not new to Asbury Park Police, because I think they worked with some other folks, but I do agree that we need to keep all of our grants, we keep looking at like each quarter, you know, or each month. If something goes wrong, we're there to try to fix it, like what is not working? So, and I think that's the only way a program works, is if you're constantly looking, you know, I mean, we're in the world of outcomes, but we want to make sure the outcomes are positive all the time, you know? And so I agree with you, Ms. Moore.
Yeah, good.
Mayor Moore.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Doug, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
If you want to put the brochures on that table, we'll.
We'll grab some.
Yeah, make sure we keep them on.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks, Lieutenant. Thank you.
We're on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
I don't really have anything, but I do want to thank and acknowledge Alicia Floyd and Cassandra Dickerson and our Police Department and Fire Department for the amazing back-to-school bookbag and book supply drive and distribution at Hammary Courts. It was amazing to see so many families and children come out and have such a great time and be able to receive these supplies that are so sorely needed. So thanks to all of you who organized this and helped pull it off.
And I don't have anything else, but I do want to say thank you. And thank you for such a creative program it was this year. It was so different. And to see children having a pet zoo. Children having a petting zoo, riding horses, having rides. It was an extraordinary program, an extraordinary day. A thank you to the city staff and everybody and the sponsors, and also to know that this event didn't cost the city anything because everybody donated their services. I think it was just amazing.
This past month, this past week, this past Monday, I left the Music Foundation. We had a concert, Eileen's concert, every Monday. I left there so proud, and one of the reasons I left there so proud is one of our Asbury Park Police Officers was just, he was so active. He was dancing, he was talking, and people just loved him. And I don't think policemen get enough credit for what they do. But this one guy, do you know his name, Eileen?
I only know him as Greg, the dancing police officer.
Dancing police officer. I tell you, people loved him, and he was shaking hands and he was.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but this guy was outstanding. He was talking to people. He wasn't just sitting by the fence, you know, he was very active. What's your name? My name is this, my name is that, and it was just funny. People just loved him. People said, please, bring him back again.
Yeah, and he was playing football with the kids and interacting with the children as well. He's great.
And people in Asbury Park loved him, so that's all I have to say. Oh, keep wearing your masks, please.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Sorry.
Mayor Moore.
Yeah, I had one thing I was gonna ask Donna, but I asked her today. I was disappointed that the senior center had a fire several weeks ago, and there's been nothing, no progress to get it open. She told me today that we got the check from the insurance company, so the seniors out there were working on it, trying to get it open as soon as possible. It was closed for 17 months because of COVID, now it's closed because of a dumb fire that wasn't our fault. So many seniors depend on that building, it's such a great building, so people like myself who are up there in age, we want it open as soon as possible. Thank you.
Matters from the City Manager.
Thanks, Melody. I do have two things. One thing with the senior center, I do want to commend Doug and Karen, the senior staff. We've been doing programming here in council chambers, so we are doing something for the seniors, and we do hope to get them back in the center sooner than later. So the one thing I want to talk about tonight, and I'm gonna bring up our new Community Development Director, Robert Goodman, you can come on up, Robert. One of the initiatives that Mayor Moore asked me to look at last year was to kind of kick-start the workforce development program. So what we did last year was we worked with our staff and professionals to put in language in the redevelopment agreements that for every new project that comes into the city, there are certain requirements regarding internships and mentorships and scholarships. So we are moving forward with that, and the K-HOP project did a very aggressive workforce development session, and we did get some local residents to participate in it. That development is on hold at the time, but at least we have started. With that, Robert just joined us recently as a Community Development Director, and he has been really focusing on this in the UEZ. So I just wanted to give the council and the public an update on some of the initiatives that Robert has started, including a job bank that we are now listing jobs for residents on our website. So, Robert, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the work around workforce development and some of the recent developments on the UEZ.
Can you hear?
Can you hear me through this?
Yeah, maybe, pull a little closer to you. Pull the mic closer. There you go.
Fair enough. Anyway, when we started the workforce development, we wanted to come up with a good plan. A lot of that was taking a look at what kind of business and economic community Asbury Park is. By looking at the final finished census data from 2018, it's apparent that most of the businesses here in town are around the retail trade as well as hospitality and dining, and a number of what I refer to as service-based businesses. The key takeaway is that the local economy is service-based, and actually more than two-thirds of them operate with 10 employees or less. This is a small business haven, for lack of a better term. To address that, we felt we needed to do several things, and the most critical among those was to have improved communications with the business community. We've had a number of different, somewhat disjointed, but concentrated efforts in being able to communicate around specific issues. What we wanted to be able to do was come up with one comprehensive list for as many businesses as possible, but still have the ability to tag them for specific special interests when needed. We were able to complete that and get those integrated with our email messaging platform. And in the last several weeks, what we've done is we've created a semi-monthly communication soliciting local businesses, small businesses, about what type of job openings they have, and there's plenty out there. In the very first, in the very first notice that went out, within an hour, I had nine requests of job postings saying that we need people in these areas. More importantly, we were able to also create another solicitation that goes out to the entire database of residents and people interested in the Asbury Park community, identifying, are you looking for new career opportunities? Are you looking for a change? And literally, within about an hour and a half, two hours, we had 36 signups as well. Our plan is to run this on a two-week cycle each and every month, and as job postings come in, we send them out to the job seekers, and we keep soliciting the businesses to understand what their current labor demands are as a result. So I think we have the infrastructure in place to communicate with the businesses and as well as people seeking career work as well. In the past year, I know that the City Manager had had an opportunity to speak with the Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth County and the program that they have been developing. Basically, the program is a workforce entry preparation program. It pretty much lines up with high school students, freshmen through senior year. The first several years are really focused on basically setting what workplace expectations are. You know, if you're going to go into the labor force, this is what, you know, an employer's gonna look for from you, and what type of decorum and behavior is necessary to be able to be successful. In the last two years, they matched this up with real-life internships as well as mentoring, especially among the more experienced members. The good news is, and we'll get into this a little bit later on, is that we might be able to help Boys and Girls Club with this program with some funding that could possibly come out of the restored UEZ funding a little bit later on, that may be coming to us, hopefully, we think, by 2022. Also, as the City Manager had discussed, that we had seen language being put into master and subsequent developer agreements around workforce development and recruiting among local residents. I've had an opportunity, the mayor was able to introduce me to several people this weekend at the Saturday event who are, have participated in the Asbury Works Program in the past, will revitalize that program so that we can monitor and cooperate with local workforce developments that are mandated in these developer agreements, and will ask that these tradespeople, semi-skilled and professionals and journeymen, tradesmen, to be able to register with us so that we can provide a simplified list quickly to any potential developer who may be seeking those skills. Are there any other questions regarding workforce development?
No, I've been getting the alerts, which are great. Yeah.
Great.
No, I just want to say, the initiative with the Boys and Girls Club, that's an initiative being taken on by Asbury Park, Long Branch Red Bank, and the county, so it's a four-pronged attack.
Comprehensive, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Well-planned and well-led, from what I can see, but we just gotta get it off the ground here in Asbury. Most significantly, on August 17th, just a little over a week ago, New Jersey signed legislation restoring funding to the Urban Enterprise Zone. The last time that the Asbury Park Urban Enterprise Zone operated as an entity was actually 2013. This is a result of changes in how the state monitored those funds and actually retained them. They were put into the General Treasury. When Governor Murphy came into office, he promised that he would commission a study to figure out what was the best way to restore this funding, and if anyone's ever read the report, it really spoke quite directly to Asbury's need to be able to have this funding to support the local economy. I'm happy to report that we already have an understanding of what funding may be available to us in 2022. The total amount will be $526,606. And the number of eligible spending categories has grown a little bit in terms of what you can do with it. I'd say one of the most significant is that you'd be able to apply some of this funding to actually directly promote the city itself as a destination. I think that's critically important for Asbury Park, which has, you know, gotten quite a reputation for being a venue for hospitality, dining, and entertainment. Of that budget, 10% can be discreetly used for administrative expenses associated with administering the program, and I think the thing that should probably get most people excited is that we can use up to 25% of those funds towards public safety. That's anywhere from payroll to, you know, ancillary expenses and even capital expenditures that may be coming down the line as well. Are there any questions regarding the UEZ restoration program?
No, it was a great program years ago, then the funding was, like you said, diverted by the state, so the state gives and the state takes back. So it's good for the county year '22. Is there any guarantee it's more than one year according to the state law? I mean, did Murphy sign it for one year, or is it like multiple years?
So it's signed for multiple years. As a matter of fact, by mid-year of each year of this program, we'll have a good understanding of what kind of funding that we can expect based on their new formulation. The prior program was basically, it was fairly simple to understand, it was just the retention of a 3.5% tax or half tax, but they also found abuses in the program through that as well. The program will still, for the most part, be reimbursable, but because of how they want to evaluate each and every project centrally through the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, there may be projects where we may be able to receive the monies right up front in order to implement it, but that will be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we'll go through over the next, you know, month or so. Robert has already a proposed budget that we'll fine-tune, then we'll present that to council to see what your thoughts are and how we want to allocate the money and move forward with our programming.
Yeah, this is exciting. Thank you, Robert.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robert, for everything. Much appreciated. That's all I have.
Matters from the City Attorney?
Nothing at this time. Thanks, Melody.
We are now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker? Moving to open?
Reckon.
All in favor? The meeting is now open to the public. Members of the public who wish to be heard, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
I hope it's okay that I take this off, because I couldn't hear a word he said. I came a long way to be heard. The name is Maureen Nevin, Cambridge Hall, Ewing, New Jersey. Okay, I wanted to first ask some questions about the resolution tonight about the, what do we call it, the default notices about the buildings on the waterfront. This has been a problem for many years, as most of us are aware, when I was concerned about it. So I'm actually complimenting the council for really getting tough now with Madison Marquette. But according to the resolution, there have been no assurances about the safety of the building for years, and it's very frightening. And the wording appears to me in the resolution. And the wording appears to me in the resolution to, to have black teeth. And it doesn't say specifically what demands and what deadlines the council is asking for and what are the penalties that, that the council is hinting at. I think the, the public would like to know that. And, you know, what is going to happen if, you know, what, what action are you asking for? The, the other, sorry about this. I can't get my notes together. So the other, the other thing is the, the bonds for the construction. I wanted to know, what is the, we did this, this, this bond is meant to be paid as, by a special assessment of the, the condo occupants. So we've done this before. I believe, I think the last one was 2014. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't think the monies actually started in 2014. I think that's when I-STAR asked to have this, with the city putting its credit line on, on the line for fifty-five million dollars for construction monies for the infrastructure. And then the city was going to, the shareholders, the bond, bondholders, rather, would be paid back in installments by the condo owners. So my question is, why do we, why are we doing this now? Is there no balance left in the fifty-five million that we did it with? And also, for one million dollars, well, it's a limit of one million dollars. And why now, when you've got the Congress finally looking like they're going to approve the $2 trillion package that's supposed to have billions, billions for the infrastructure?
Okay, I'll start, I'll start off by the second question a little bit, and Donna can follow up, and then Joanne Voss. Joanne, you might as well come out, take a chair. Joanne's with the firm or Forefront Redevelopment Council of Marizidi Falcon, so she'll answer those questions. But as far as the drawing down, I believe it was way before 2014. I think it was 2011, when previous mayor and council settled with I-STAR, where the RAB bonds were going to be paid off by future homeowners and no longer paid by I-STAR. You know, the Judge Polittans had worked together, and that was their idea of working together. I-STAR was off the hook, and now the future taxpayers were on the hook, or future owners were on the hook. There's still tons of money in there. I think it was sixty-eight million, maybe there's fifty-five million left, and they're pulling down a million because they have to do the Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue infrastructure. That part has never been done. So that's what they're pulling down, the million dollars for, to finish the infrastructure on Third between Kingsley and Heck and Fourth and Kingsley and Heck. Donna, go on and correct me if I'm wrong.
So, so actually, Mayor, this is a rental property, so this is not applied to the shelf. So this money is not coming, being drawn down from that, that sixty-eight million dollars. But it's, it's still going to go for the infrastructure. It's not coming off the shelf, though.
Well, then, explain that to me.
No, so, so yes, we're bonding the million dollars for the, for the infrastructure improvements, but it's not coming off of that, that shelf loan that you guys initiated back when, in 2014. These are rental properties. That agreement was specified, and I talked to Mr. Kinnelup about this last week. It was for ownership, not for, for rental properties. So you, you don't take the money out of the shelf for the rental properties. This, this two hundred, this two hundred and six units are all rental. They're not owner-occupied.
Good question, Maureen.
No, so.
So, so, so wait a second. So may you, everybody up here, we're paying this million dollars back?
No, 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 no. The, the owner.
Who's paying it back?
The owner of the building.
The owner of the building.
Owner of the building, yes.
Can we know who that is?
Okay, I understand that. It can't be paid back by condo owners because it's rentals.
Correct.
But, okay, it's not being paid back by taxpayers.
Right, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, and then, so, Maureen, that kind of strains that out a little bit, then. Joanne, please, if you remember Maureen's questions.
Yeah, so I think the question was, what are the remedies under the agreement that the city could exercise? Is that what you were asking about? Yeah, so the, the agreement that was signed in 2010 has a handful of remedies that the city could exercise in events of default. And under the agreement, one of those remedies is termination. And of course, one is litigation, and that is not to say that those will be exercised. What we're doing at this time is identifying that defaults have occurred and demanding that they be remedied. And under the agreement, there's a cure period for the developer to address the defaults. They have a time period to do that, and that's what we intend to notify Madison Marquette about formally.
Right, so, just so that people understand, that was the answer to the, the.
The default notices.
Right. I'm sorry, what was your name?
My name is Joanne Voss. I'm Special Redevelopment Council for the City from Marizidi Falcon.
Special, I'm sorry?
Special Redevelopment Council.
I have another point, but.
No, no, no.
Next. Conform to the.
Okay, thank you, Maureen.
Hi, everybody. Sylvia, Sylvia, Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to say something about the fire you had brought up earlier at 1201 Springwood. And as you know, our offices are housed on the first floor of that building as well. And we've been, I guess we've been displaced from there for about a month now, and I, I don't think, it looks like we're going to get back in there in the next couple of weeks. But I really have to say that our fire department and Chief Ketti and T, they were magnificent. The response time and then the police department, the way they came and held all the onlookers, including me. It was a really, I mean, it was bad. It was a lot of smoke coming out of that unit, and the water damage is really what's caused all the problems for the rest of us now and, and moving forward for quite some time. But I was really proud to see just the structure and the protocol, and they all just moved phenomenally. So I thank them all for that, and nobody was hurt, and everybody was out, and that's wonderful. Also, and I think Robert might have gone through the door, wanted to welcome him also and let him know that any of the services that the chamber does, I think we've got a little bit of overlap in stuff, but I'm happy to support with whatever we have to help his efforts with the workforce development. And I'll, I'll reach out to, to his, I'm sure he must have like an email and stuff up online by now. But I had meant to say that while he was in here, but I didn't get a chance to. Other than that, I hope everybody's doing well.
Thank you.
Zach Sigmund, 700 Embry Street. So this pertains to, it's not on the agenda today, but it pertains to the rent control ordinance. I just think it, it's really just creating a lot more work than it needs to be, requiring the landlords to fill out all this paperwork and send in their mortgage documents and all this stuff, when it should just really be cut and dry. We should let all tenants know their rights and, you know, where they could go to figure out if they have an issue with their landlord raising their rent. And then it should just be a case-by-case basis, like, hey, I'm a tenant, I think I got raised my rent unfairly, let me go meet with the, the board and mediate it out. That would save a lot of money, a lot of paperwork. I don't think we would need a lawyer that was hired for a $30,000 retainer to, you know, to, to guide the board. I think it would save the city a lot of money, and it would save the landlords a lot of headache, and we could just get the show on the road and, and start doing it. But it just seems like nothing's gotten done in two weeks or the two meetings that the board has had, and it just seems like the goalposts keep moving. And why not start small? And then if it doesn't work, let's change it. And you guys, you know, the council could always change it at any time. So start small, let's get the ball, you know, going, and then if it needs some changing, let's do it. Pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
I can't talk with this microphone. Can you hear me? I'll just let it sit where it is. Okay. You're good. There we go. Good evening, I'm Madeline Monaco. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. I also want to commend the city on trying to hold Madison Marquette accountable for the boardwalk renovation. Thank you so much. This is something that's been on our minds for many years now, and I appreciate it. Kathleen Luma, one of my friends, actually had some questions about it. She couldn't be here tonight, so I thought I'd ask on her behalf. She's asking if the city has copies of the insurance policies that Madison Marquette carries on the historical buildings and how long they are valid for, et cetera. And she's wondering what kind of insurance company would underwrite a policy on these failing structures that millions of people walk through and visit each year. The second question she has is, what are the Green Acres parcels that are involved in the default notice and whether or not the state's Green Acres Division will be notified about the default notice? And then I have one question for you, Amy, on a, a different topic. Last year, we did a drive for laptops for an underserved population, which is graduating high school students who were going off to college, and I'm wondering if that, I've, I've been away for eight months, so I just got back last week. I'm wondering if that effort has been researched this year and if you need any help with that if it is going forward.
It hasn't been researched. We also raised, as you know, $5,000 for students to buy books, eBooks, and all of that in addition to all the laptops. But, you know, Sancho Gray is not the superintendent who I work with, so why don't I reach out to the current superintendent and find out? One of the issues that we had that year, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, was the kids that graduated that year, it was the first year of COVID. And so we were getting laptops partly because they weren't given any by the school, and they have since been given them by the school. But I, I will reach out and, and happy to loop you in on that, and we'll see what they need, and we'll, you know, we'll raise money and figure out how to do it. But appreciate the reminder, and I'll, I'll send an email this week.
And then I just had.
Donna, I think, I think you may have answered Kathleen's questions.
Yeah, so we responded to Kathleen in an email earlier, but if the council would like, I could have Joanne read, read the response that we sent to Kathleen.
Oh, I didn't get that from her.
No, no problem. No problem. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my understanding is that there are no references to Green Acres in the resolution regarding the default. That's not what's being discussed at this time. My understanding is that the only relevance of Green Acres for purposes of the resolution that's before city council tonight is with regard to the Splash Park, which is operated within a property that is designated as Green Acres. And the failure to operate that Splash Park is deemed, we believe, a default under the agreement. So that's part of the notices. Your other question was with regard to the insurance. There are provisions in the subsequent developer agreement that require, that permit basically the city to have information regarding the insurance that Madison Marquette maintains for, for the building than the other retail properties. We, we've asked for information, we don't have it, and so we continue to seek that information. There is a, an easement agreement to which the city is a signatory, along with Madison Marquette's predecessor, so it applies to Madison Marquette, that requires them to have insurance, but it's, it's the type that would cover fire and third-party liability. So we don't have that. I don't have that information specifically, but under that agreement, they are required to maintain it.
And, and are they required to submit that to you, submit that information to you?
They're, they're, under that agreement, they're supposed to submit it to the state. Yeah. Yeah, we, we don't have it, and I don't know that it's been submitted, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And is that part of the reason we notified SHPO about this?
Yes, yep, we, yeah, we've maintained that they have failed to maintain Convention Hall as required under the SHPO easement agreement.
Thank you.
Good evening. Not as toiled as Madeline, sorry. Donna, how to work it, Amy? Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue, and I'm going to go back to one of our favorite topics of conversation, which is, of course, I-STAR's pool club application. And recent council meeting, we were told that the next step in the process was going to be having them submitting, I-STAR submitting their plans to the floodplain manager for review. And we recently understand that, that following the June meeting, there was a forty-five-day period from the, the time that the planning board had made their provisional approval until they were required to make a final approval, and that time period has passed without that happening. And I just want to understand, what are the implications of that for, for the future of, what does that mean? After two and a half years of planning board meetings, what does it mean that, that they have not given their final approval and the implications of that for the plans for this project? Thank you. And also, a question I've asked before, but how is the public going to be informed about any of this? Because as far as I know, none of this information was made available to the public in any forum where any interested resident of Asbury Park would have been updated or seen it or known what was going on. Thank you.
Okay, and good questions, and somebody asked me that question prior to the weekend, and I started asking questions myself because I'm on the planning board and nobody told me. And I know it was past the forty-five days, and I was told that both parties, both lawyers, because both parties are represented by lawyers, had agreed and signed off on the forty-five days and had agreed that the meeting's on September 27th, and then the planning board will review what's in front of it. And I'm trying to think, yeah, something else. How does it affect the city in the forty-five day? It doesn't because both lawyers representing, both parties signed off and agreed to the 27th.
My follow-up question then would be.
How does this, how does the public know this? I didn't know it. So I think it's a planning board question. I think that's where you got to go to the planning board and ask, because I, I had to call the planning board myself and ask.
At that last meeting that I was at, when we were talking about the letter from FEMA that had come and that you were, you know, was sent to the city, and apparently you were not aware of that, and you said, full transparency, we will let you know. The fact that these things can go on in an important project like that and that the people at the, that we turn to in the city are not aware of it, really, it, it, I don't understand that. I would think that there has to be full and open communications on things of this nature. And I know there's a lot going on and everybody's busy, but this is a major issue that we've been dealing with for two and a half years, and I still feel like, you know, I don't have, I don't have the information. I don't know what's going on. I was told when I inquired that it was going, that the, the plans were going to go next to the floodplain manager. And obviously, that hasn't happened, but we were never told that it was being bumped back to the, to the planning board. And I don't know what planning board's responsibilities might be, what the implications are, what this means. Where are we? And, and so as a citizen, as just a resident, I find this very frustrating. Thank you. And I appreciate all of you.
And I, I was frustrated myself because somebody that asked me the question is a member of SAW, and their attorney didn't tell them. So I, I don't understand why that lack of communication. But wait, while you're here, I still, I have a good question because you bring it up. And I did tell you, like, everybody would know, full transparency. So Donna, when this is, if, if this is ever resolved, and I-STAR goes ahead and submits plans, when they submit plans. when they submit plans to construction, can we tell the public plans have been submitted to construction?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, so when plans are submitted, you just heard that, when plans are submitted to construction, we will let you know, and then I guess you can Oprah them, you can do anything you want with them.
Okay, thank you. And the FEMA, the letters from FEMA, is that going to be brought up at the planning board?
I think that's the reason, like, it hasn't been decided yet. Again, again, that's a question for the planning board. People raised issues that the planning board wasn't told about FEMA, and so, it's got to go back to the planning board, and they've got to decide whether that's enough to make them change their mind. It's my, what I was told this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
But as far as the city side, when the plans are submitted to construction, you heard from the city manager, we'll make it public.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Thomas DeSeno, 3600 Route 66 in Neptune. Apologize for my attire, I didn't go to work today, I pursue a hobby. I have two issues that I wanted to talk about. First, I read with absolute delight your default notice resolution for the beachfront developers. On that issue, a few years ago, I was curious what was taking so long, so I wanted to, I did an Oprah request for a bunch of documents. If there's any criticism coming, it's not for you guys, it's for your predecessors. What I got back a few years ago from the city, when I asked for all the redevelopment documents, I got like five or six documents. The WRA from the 1980s wasn't even complete, the last 12 pages weren't there. That's the appendix that tells you what properties are there. Whole thing's useless without that. So I started reading it, I noticed there's a lot of other documents that are referenced. So I called the city and said, you know, I asked for all the documents. They said, "We're not going to be able to do that. We don't even, we don't have a central depository. You'd have to make request after request." And I know how that book ends, they'd end up charging me. So my request to you guys is, if you could possibly do an initiative, where you collect all the redevelopment documents, going back to the 80s, all the ordinances, all the contracts, if we're allowed to have contracts between developers and sub-developers, if our authorizing documents allow that, put everything online chronologically, so that members of the public who want to know, what's, where were we, where are we, where are we going, can go and look at this central depository. It'll also be a great resource for subsequent council members, who get on the board and then say, gee, I better brush up on where we've been for 30-something years since we first passed this, where, and where we're going. I know what's coming next, is an initiative like that is time and money. So to solve that, I would offer my own services pro bono, if you wanted to appoint me a special counsel to do that. I would try to gather up the documents with you, chronologically orient them, and put them up on your website. Because I think you, a lot of people would appreciate the opportunity, see for themselves what are the obligations, what are the defaults, what are the remedies? That was issue one. Issue two, I saw in the newspaper, an article about the parking lots up at the beachfront. I-STAR has no licenses for their parking lots. They've never paid the city in five years. The city council doesn't have their rates approved like they're supposed to. And I was wondering if there's any follow-up to that, to remedy that situation? And I haven't been to one of these meetings in years, so I don't know if you answer now, or if you tell me, you'll get to me later, either way's fine with me.
The first one, I'm going to have you, please, tomorrow or after tonight, get in touch with Donna, as far as how you can help us. I think part of the problem is going to be, is like, believe it or not, and you'll believe it, because you've been here all your life, we can't find half the documents.
I'm sure. It goes back too many years.
Actually, we have a binder that we found the other day, that I'll be happy to share with you. It's down in the finance department now.
I'd like to see that, too.
Yeah, I just, Joanne just found it the other day, so give me like, not tomorrow, give me like till next week, and we'll talk.
You've been nothing but rapid in getting back to me when I contact you, so when you're ready, just let me know, and I'll be glad to work, even with a special counsel, if there's holes in it that we need to find, and I'd be glad to help with that.
You'd be helping us all, because, believe me, we get frustrated when, and our council gets frustrated when, like, well, what happened here? Nobody can find it. Like, that's why, the last meeting, we hired a firm to take out all the boxes, take them to the company, take pictures, put them online, and store them. Because you're looking through the safes, you're looking through rooms, you're looking through closets, and like, say, we just found us something last week.
Good, good.
And then, the second thing, as far as the parking, yes, we did follow up on it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And they were charged the fee that they didn't pay. They did have a mercantile license, but they didn't charge the parking fee. And I'm not sure, and I'm not going to argue with you, because you're the lawyer, I'm not sure if we can set their rates.
We can't.
I saw in the order, and it says they have to submit them to you.
48 hours.
Well, initially, submit them to you, and I assume that means approval. I'm, you know, I'm sure lawyers would differ on that, but why have to submit them if you don't have to approve them? And then there's 48 hours at least notification, because everybody here knows, you go down there at noon, it's one price, you go down there at 5, it's another price, that's not supposed to be. And I hope we can fix that.
It, there was a parking agreement, you're right, in 2017, it expired. There's going to be a new one in 2022.
Good.
But they were charged the rates, and it was, I think, it was like $134 a lot that they didn't pay. Yes, they were charged and they paid, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for your help.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention, Donna.
Somebody help Rita, please.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm loud. 504 Rita Moreno, 504 Eighth Avenue. And about the parking lots, I was going to buy one many years ago, the one on the corner of Sunset and Kingsley. And I remember, they all had to be paved, they had to be marked, and you had to have a certain insurance policy to cover all the cars in the parking lot. And I don't think any of that has been done, as far as the parking lot. Also, aren't there supposed to be buildings on those parking lots? That's a question. The other question I have is about, something I heard two weeks ago here. I wanted to know how much money was in a fund for the cars that, for the developer that doesn't have enough parking? And he's supposed, he used to, I think the amount was $3,000 that they had to pay into the fund. Does anybody know how much money is in that fund? And who's collecting all this money, is what I want to know? It seems that there's a lack of, years ago, the tax collector got all the money every day at the end of the day. I know that for a fact. But I don't think that's happening right now. I don't think there's any money in any of the funds, nobody's paying. I hope I'm wrong, but I think that's the way it is. They were supposed to pay $3,000 for every parking space they didn't have, which is many, you know that. You probably have enough money if they all pay to build a parking ramp. So I'd like to know the answer to that. And the other thing is, why do we need a lawyer when we put in an Oprah request to send you three, four, five, six pages? That's ridiculous, and we're paying them for every page, right Fred? Don't they get paid? Fred ought to know about that. I think it's ridiculous that we have to have an Oprah request. Nobody's that busy in this city. Nobody can tell me that they're working eight hours straight. I don't believe that. That they can't answer an Oprah request. So they're saying there's too many of them. Well, there must be a reason for it. People are suspicious about what's going on around here, but, because you keep most of the people in the dark, like about the pool, that was one thing. You have to tell people what's going on. We're not mushrooms, we don't live in the dark. We have to know what's going on. Instead of having your picture taken, maybe you should have an article about how much money we have in the parking fund, which I can't seem to get. I probably could get the correct answer, but I don't think it's a very good one. So do you know how much money is in the parking fund?
Let me go back to your question, your first question. Do you remember it?
My first one, yeah.
Okay, so the answer is yes, supposedly, when, I don't know.
What?
Well, that's the answer to your question. So what was your question? Weren't those parking lots supposed to be developed one day? The answer is yes, and supposedly, when, I don't know. So that's the answer to one. Number two, the fund, years ago, was 15,000, past council knocked it down to 3,000, we put it back to 15,000. How much is in it? Can't give you today. You can call Joanne tomorrow and find out. I mean, it's, again, Rita, you call all the time, all you got to do is ask, and we'll give you that information. I mean, do you think anybody up here right now is going to say, $83,023.32? No, I do not know off the top of my head. The third thing, well, one, before that, you talked about the parking lots, back in your days, they used to be, had to be lined, stripes, they still do. They have to have insurance, they have to have bumpers, be it wood or cement, they have to be lined, they have to have the attendance hours, if there isn't a tenant. So everything that they're doing, yes, they have insurance. Your last question was the Oprah request. Yes, a lawyer has to look at them, because some subjects are touchy subjects, and some things may have to be redacted, and some things may not be able to be given out. And you wouldn't want some, just, you know, somebody giving out information that shouldn't be given out. So that's the reason a lawyer, be it Fred or the other lawyer, reviews them all.
Not necessary, you know that.
Okay, that's your opinion, but every, every other city in America disagrees with you.
Okay, one more question. When is Eighth Avenue getting paid?
To what?
Eighth Avenue.
Eight, it's on the list, Rita, it's not going to be this year, but we applied for the money.
Oh, God, okay.
But I'm not, I'm telling you the truth, it's not going to be this year.
And you correct me if I'm wrong, but the amount of money that's in the parking fund now is more than when we were elected, because it was zero when we were elected.
Correct.
We want to get the microphone still.
It's not in our budget, Rita.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy Thompson, Park Avenue, from Help But Hand Cuffs Incorporated. For those who may know, we had a small press conference yesterday about a community member who in 2016 was sodomized by the Asbury Park Police Department. Three officers brought him here, arrested him, one put him in a [BLEEP] chokehold, the other one dug his fingers up his rectum, searching for drugs. That's not even all of it, okay? This lawsuit from Saleek Hinton reads like a [BLEEP] Martin Scorsese film, but only in this film, the mafia enforcers are the Asbury Park Police Department officers. I know not everybody, every officer does this, but officers can speak out if they don't support things like this, because if not, they're part of this rape culture. We have stills from the video, where you see the man choked, I believe this is Camille Warwick, Joe Leon, and also Javon Britt, sticking their hands up the man's ass. Now listen, now, when they sent it to Internal Affairs, and you, the mayor and council, know all of this, because I emailed you about it two weeks ago, to which I received no response. So I don't know what you're doing with that email, but you've got it, you're aware of this, and there's silence from you. When he put this Internal Affairs complaint in, and it was substantiated as a label they like to disguise sexual assault as for police, it's called improper search. Do you know what these officers did? Javon Britt? He took crimes that other people admitted to, and were already assigned blame for, and they pinned it on him. So they could lock him up, and so they didn't even have a chance to file a lawsuit on the sexual assault. Okay? Guess what happened to those charges? Just in case you think the man's lying, they were dismissed. So here we have gang rape culture in the Asbury Park Police Department. This is one of over 40 lawsuits that's coming out of this terrorist organization. So John Moore, Amy Quinn, Jesse Kendall, Yvonne, Aileen, please, where is your civilian review legislation? I don't want to hear the Attorney General to do something. What have you done here, besides stay silent on gang rape culture? And everyone else who lives here in the community, I would take a hard look at this. Whether you know someone, or related to someone, if you don't want to be part of gang rape culture, this is a scene out of American Made. I would speak up on it. That's what I wanted to share with you tonight. Thank you. If you have a response, I'd like to hear.
Yes, and Randy, I'm not sure if I taught you after that email or not, but I've taught you many times in the past. You just said there's litigation. When there's pending litigation, we cannot comment on pending litigation. And I know you don't like that as an answer, but it's the truth, and every lawyer...
There's a law that says you cannot comment with a pending litigation?
It's the, it's the advice of our legal staff and professional staff.
Doesn't mean, okay. What you can do, what I suggest to you, is you can issue a statement of compassion. That means, as a human being, you can do that, John.
When the facts come out? I haven't heard the facts.
Oh, you know what? Okay, when the facts went up his ass, that was fact, not a behavior. I saw this video, and believe it, discuss it.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street. I'm a property owner in town, I wanted to take this opportunity here before you guys tonight, to ask if you would consider directing the administration to extend the amount of time that's been given to property owners to register all the various pieces of information under the rent control ordinance. I know the property owners are, many of them have registered, many of them have not yet or partially. And I also know that there's certain amendments to the ordinance that are perhaps being considered or being drafted, and then to be considered. And I think it would make sense to extend the time. The administration has said unofficially, and verbally, and informally, in a rent leveling board meeting a month ago, that they would extend the original July 15th date to the end of September. So my ask of you and the administration tonight is, please consider a 60-day extension beyond that, to the end of November, so that it aligns with whatever's happening with potential amendments or review of the ordinance, so that there's clarity to the property owner community, and that they can all comply, and have it be clear, because it's sort of unclear, and right now, everything's been informal, and, you know, trust us, we'll just extend it, but we won't enforce it, and we're going to look at changes. And I just think it might be a clear and concise way to address the property owning community, and please consider a 60-day extension in advising your administration to issue a formal 60-day extension. Thank you so much.
Thank you. When's your next meeting?
I'm sorry?
When's your next meeting?
I believe it's next week, Joe.
Okay, just because, I don't know if that's a subject you should be bringing to us, or bringing to your committee, and your lawyer, and your administration.
It'll be raised again next...
Okay.
Robert and I have spoken about it, so it's something that we can certainly talk about.
Okay. Because, right, I wasn't aware of it, until you just said it. Thank you.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. And I want to say, first, just to that, because it just came up, no, don't understand anything, hard deadlines are good sometimes, when it's to get the ball rolling, because if you keep kicking the can down the road, you get a lot of nothing, a lot of words on paper that translate to nothing. So, set a line, and then meet it. And then after we establish something after it's built, then also, then you can go back and modify, you can find the holes in it, but set a standard, because that's what, we don't have a lot here. And also, I heard something last night that disturbed me. I didn't want to, you know, what Randy said, is that we opted out. I hope that is not true, it was just chatter, that we opted out of the Attorney General's pilot program for de-escalation training for our Asbury Park Police.
Total lie, whoever told you that.
Absolutely.
Tell them to come, may not call them a liar to the face.
Okay, when has it started, and when, has it started yet, or when will it start?
Started weeks ago, if not months ago. One class already went through, and the attorney, the Monmouth County prosecutor's making sure Asbury Park Police are going to be in every class going.
Okay, all right, thank you, because it disturbed me a little bit.
That's been reported several times in the papers, sorry you missed it.
There's actually a picture on the website of the class.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And actually, I heard a lot of things last night, talking about transparencies, and what lays on the lap of the Attorney General's office, and what lays on the lap of the city council. And I was pleased to see some of the city council there. And I am hoping that you translate what you heard that comes under your privy, like some of the civil service things, some of the enforcement, some of the policies on creation of CCRBs, where this is the second Attorney General, that said that they will help Asbury Park craft one that is great for the city. The first Grewall said that he'll help Asbury Park craft a CCRB for Asbury. And last night, our acting Attorney General also said that he will help actively craft one that is specifically under the laws that stand now, and what could stand in the future under, after legislation is passed. That will give us some peace here in town. So I hope we heard that, and we are going to be actively working on behalf of crafting that ordinance, because if we do it on the side of the people, which we can craft it, it means nothing if it's not adopted by the city council. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I heard some things last night, some things were correct, and some things were totally wrong, when the Attorney General said, well, any city can opt in and opt... opt out of civil service, totally not true, and he was corrected, so.
He was correct.
Okay, okay, okay. As far as, as far as the CCRB, we were all ready to go, and the past Attorney General, basically on June 11th or June 21st, gutted all reasonable ways that we could set up one that would work. I didn't hear the acting Attorney General say that last night, tell him to give us a call, because we've been in contact with NORC, because NORC had one. You can talk to Shoshona Page, who's the liaison to the Mayor Baraka. Deputy Mayor Quinn, and, no, that's it, no more conversations, and I'm not going to have cross-conversations. Your time is up, I'm trying to answer your questions, and you're interrupting me, so sorry, next please.
Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park, regarding the parking situation, I knew somebody who had a parking lot, and there was a lot of restrictions. You had to have it paved, you paid the Mercantile license, they even had inspectors come over and check, and you also had to have posted, you know, what the rates were per hour and the hours of your operation. How you guys let these things fall between the cracks, I have no clue. I am, however, aware of, a lot of the beachfront properties that have allowed developers to come into their town, have just willy-nilly let them get away with murder. I have to remind you, you work for us, we pay your fee, we pay your salaries, we're taxpayers, you should be, you should take care of this city like it's your child, you shouldn't be kowtowing to these developers. Sure, they come in and they build this and they build that, but they get theirs too, and you know that, John, because I asked you to explain to the audience one day what the pilot program is and the whole nine yards. But this is one of the problems and one of the diseases that are going along the seashore when developers step in, and I think it's something that you should really be mindful of, and remember that this is your city. You don't own it, you don't, you don't say, well, I'm this and I'm that, you're nothing, what you're doing is a job, and you should take it more seriously than what you're doing. That's all I'm saying.
Well, Louise, we've known each other for many years, and I find that a little bit disheartening that you were to dress me that way, just because you know how much I love the city, and I don't think it's my city, I've never said that in my life, it's our city, I think I've given more than 100% my entire life. And as far as the beachfront redevelopment, how many times do you want me to say, it sucks? I mean, so, I mean, like Felicia said, you can't keep on kicking the can down the road, but we've got to, it's a 30-year signed agreement, as far as giving anybody any special breaks or anything, it's never been done. We constantly look at these things to see if we can find somebody in default, this is the only council that found somebody in default where they had to spend money to fix something. The Fifth Avenue ban stand, people shaking their heads, it's not true, it's the truth. So people just want to say, oh, let's, let's go to arbitration and get our asses kicked and lose $750,000. If that's the course you want, we'll go to arbitration and lose, and then when your taxes go up, I mean, we just can't take somebody to court and say, hey, guess what, we don't like this contract, it sucks, and it does suck, excuse my language.
Get rid of it.
How? It's a legally signed document, you can't do anything in the world unilaterally, it takes two to dance, Rita, as I said, Felicia can't talk, you can't talk. Louise, you had some time left if you want to say anything. I said you had some time left if you want to say anything.
Yeah.
What?
It's, okay.
Thank you, anybody else?
Not seeing any other members of the public, move to close, second, all in favor?
All right.
The meeting is now closed to the public.
Can I, Donna, ask you a question? Oh, sorry. No, 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 go, do what you gotta do. No, just to Miss Rachelson's point, because me, Eileen, and Jesse, we aren't on the planning board, so I'm often not finding out decisions and what, Ms. Michelson, sorry, yeah, Ms. Michelson, right, Ellen Michelson. I say all that to say, those of us not on the planning board often don't have a clue what they've done, like, can we just chew on how to better, both have transparency for the public, but also, like, we used to get reports, we used to get reports from the planning board on, like, what was passed, what wasn't. For those of us not on the planning board, I'm having the same problem that Ms. Michelson is as well, I don't know what's happened.
I don't know why you, I don't know what happened, why, when did you-
I don't know, I'll send you the last one.
I'm on the planning board, and I didn't know what she didn't know.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a solution, I'm saying, can we just chew on a better way to that process, and maybe it's, you know, I'm just-
I can get a summary of the planning board meeting distributed to you on Friday, if you're happy.
That would be wonderful.
Yvonne, did you know that we pushed it up to the 27th? Yvonne's on the plan, we're cheated.
So if the planning board members don't know, what good will a summary do us?
Well, I want a summary, Eileen, so you don't have a-
No, no, but I want a summary. Okay.
Okay. We're on to the-
Yeah, we'll chew on it.
We're on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive session meeting of 4:00 PM, and the municipal council regular meeting of 6:00 PM of August 11th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature, there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council member as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Our consent agenda consists of Resolution 2021-379 to 2021-381. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution is Resolution 21-382, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
No.
We're on to Resolution 21-383, a resolution authorizing the transmission repairs to Kubota number 68 at the Beach Department. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
No.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-384, a resolution authorizing purchase of wristbands for the police, for the Beach Department.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-385, a resolution authorizing the purchase of body armor vests for the Police Department.
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-386, the resolution of the-
Skip it and come back, Joe, everybody's in the room.
All righty.
Which is that?
Resolution 21-386, the resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to authorize issuance of default notices to Madison Asbury Retail LLC for failure to meet their obligations under the subsequent developer agreement entered into by the city of Asbury Park, Madison Asbury Retail LLC, and Asbury Partners LLC dated June 1, 2010, as well as an easement agreement entered into by the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office, and Asbury Partners LLC dated January 15, 2004. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-387, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park making application to the local finance board seeking authorization for not to exceed 1 million redevelopment area bonds to finance the construction and installation of certain infrastructure improvements within a portion of the city of Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area pursuant to NJSA 40A:12A and NJSA 40A:12A-67.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-388 is a resolution to approve a place-to-place liquor license transfer for 934 Shiv LLC doing business as Lush to be placed at 700 Cookman Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-389 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a use and license agreement with SHN Festivals LLC concerning a live cultural music and art festival to be held and designate a portion of the city of Asbury Park waterfront area from September 18, 2021 through September 19, 2021, and authorizing the issuance of a special events permit in connection therewith.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21-390 is a resolution approving appointments to the city of Asbury Park Green Team, and the person being appointed is Nancy Sabino.
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to ordinances for introduction.
Before we go on to ordinances, I've got a question for Fred and Donna. As much as Esquire, Thomas Tassano, offered to help us with the contract and see how he can help us, I mean, I'm all for that, I know there's three votes up here all for that, he offered to do a pro bono, how do we, I know you're going to talk to him next week, do we have to do that by resolution or what?
You could absolutely formalize it by resolution, authorizing him to serve as a pro bono, pro bono special counsel for the city to assist with uploading the documents to the city's website.
Can we do that tonight, or do you want to wait and do it the next meeting?
If you'd like, you can do it tonight, because it's a-
I don't know that we need a resolution, because there's, there's no fee, like my-
Okay, so it's no fee, but I mean, it gives him, you know, some official capacity that way, but.
Okay, I think we can.
Unless he wants to just act as a volunteer.
Yeah, I don't think we need- Why don't we talk to him and figure out- Yeah, let's, let's not-
He has been complaining as long as Rita, as long as Louise, as long as everybody about this agreement, he's offering to help us to find, hopefully finds a solution, if not put everything in order so people can go through it. So to turn that down would be irresponsible, so I want to take him up on his generous offer. So make that happen, please.
Yes, Mayor.
Very good.
Totally agree.
We are on to ordinances for introduction, the first ordinance is Ordinance 2021-33, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on Block 4001, lots 2 dash, lots 2 through 15, within the city of Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area, and establishing a mechanism for the payment of the cost thereof, with a public hearing date of September 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
The second ordinance for introduction is Ordinance 2021-34, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with AP Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption, with a public hearing date of September 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Endurement, do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? The meeting is now adjourned.